And the invocation will be provided by Wesley Memorial Church Pastor Ramon Torres. Pledge of Allegiance will be by Commissioner Bobby Goins, please stand for the invocation.
Let us pray. Almighty and everlasting God, in your goodness, watch over those in authority, so that people everywhere may enjoy your freedom, peace, and security. To that end, bless those who have gathered here this afternoon. Grant these commissioners wisdom and guidance as they discuss the items before them. May they ever be mindful of their obligation to the people of Bradley County. May they work in harmony with one another, so that the needs of our communities will be met. Let honesty and integrity define the actions of those who have gathered here. And may our leaders here, and those elected to serve throughout our country, always seek the ways of righteousness, justice, and mercy. In your son's name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. We don't have the mayor with us today, we'll go to Adam, do you have anything, sir?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of things that the mayor had asked to bring. The first is a resolution on behalf of the Bradley County Sheriff's Office, authorizing the mayor to enter into a master purchase license and services agreement with Dynamic Imaging Systems, Inc. This is for software as well as equipment that will allow our corrections staff to work in a paperless environment. It will significantly increase their efficiency and ability to do their job. Not asking for any additional money, this is funded largely, almost entirely, by a grant that the sheriff's office received from Securus. And there is just a little bit that they will be using from their current budget to fund this. One change, actually two changes, this resolution that's being passed around states that the agreement is for a period of two years, there's also a dollar amount there at the end. We got late notice this morning, but not in time to correct this. It will actually be a three-year agreement, and the dollar amount will go up slightly because of that. So we will make sure that you've got the corrected version of this resolution before you vote on it, but are asking that it be placed on next week's voting agenda to pass.
Mr. Chairman, I'll take that.
Agreed.
The second item is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an interlocal agreement between the city of Cleveland and Bradley County regarding the non-contiguous annexation of roughly seventeen point five acres of property on Buchanan Road. The city, the current property owner has requested to be annexed by the city, and so that's what triggers the document or the resolution that you're getting ready to see. The property consists of two parcels, approximately seventeen point five acres total, and is non-contiguous to the city, but is inside the urban growth boundary. The annexation would zone the property as a PUD or Planned Unit of Development. This is currently a vacant parcel, and a single-family dwelling community or homes is what is being proposed, roughly eighty single-family homes. The city proposes to provide all services, emergency services, and the city will also connect this property to the city by taking over the maintenance of a section of Twenty-Ninth Street, which is currently a county-maintained road. Lori has a full copy of the interlocal agreement along with a map of the property and the plan of service, if you'd like to take a look at that between now and next week, but are asking that this be placed on the agenda for vote next week, please.
Lori, can you provide each member of the commission a map that you've got provided? Because we need to understand this.
I could recognize Crystal.
Yeah.
I don't think this is working, oh, it is. If you all will recall, we actually adopted a policy about these agreements, so it will actually have to go through two work sessions. So it will need to be placed on the next work session agenda. At the earliest it could be voted on then would be that next voting session.
Okay. Yes.
Adam, I'm just wondering, this is going to be an interlocal agreement, and we just found out that they're also doing a next annexation by referendum again this August. I'm just wondering, I know you're not the city, but just wondering, maybe we can send them a question over there? I don't know why it is they're doing it this method, but yet the other one on X twenty, that they're doing through the voting system or the referendum?
I could answer that question, the property that is on the August ballot for referendum is outside the urban growth boundary.
So back to what we were talking about a couple of months ago, but...
So the city, the city cannot do this method if it's outside of the growth boundary. So I am not speaking for them certainly, but I assume the reason for the different approach is with the, with that one, which is non-contiguous in the urban growth boundary, they can do it either way, but if it's outside of the growth boundary, they have to do it by referendum in order to do it.
But they, this one, since it's inside the growth plan, they can't send it to a vote?
They can, but they can also do it this way.
They can also do it this way, so if we said no to this, they would go to the voting method?
They could.
Yeah, thank you.
Commissioner Blake, it'll be an issue of timing as well, as you know, the mayor's already called for the urban, the growth boundary. The growth plan committee to convene, we're very close to being able to announce those committee members in the next couple of weeks. Assuming that that process could be completed before August, they, the city has said off the record that they'd be willing to pull it from the August agenda, I'm sorry, the August election, and then it would come back to you as a, actually it would come, if it was inside the urban growth boundary, this is actually contiguous to the city, but outside the urban growth boundary, so it would actually not come back to us, but they are open to pulling that referendum if that committee does their job in the next few months.
We have, excuse me, this is going to go through another work session, so we can do a little research and get back with you, Crystal, thank you.
Mr. Hughes.
Adam, are you aware, I'm looking on here and I'm not just seeing it, and maybe it's because I'm missing it, but in the past they've taken the city as include the road frontage on that or the road? Are they planning on doing that with this property also?
It'll outline that in the services, in the document that Lori has, but I don't know. Other than the roadway that was mentioned on Twenty-Ninth Street, there's nothing specifically outlined. Do you have anything?
No, I'm not. I do know it was sent to Tom Collins, and I don't think he had any issues with it from a road perspective, at least not that I've heard.
Well, it wasn't that, I was just asking if the city was actually going to take in the road itself as they have in the past on some of these other properties?
They would be taking a portion of, I think it's Twenty-Ninth Street.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Waters.
Guys, about the referendum, this referendum we presented, the task force. A task force is being put together by our city and county mayors, I assume, to look at the impact of this, the new referendum package that the city is laying out, correct?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
There's a task force, is there not a task force?
There's the growth plan committee that the mayor has convened that involves folks from the city and the county. They will study and look at the urban growth boundary, whether or not to extend that for Charleston and the city of Cleveland.
Don't these referenda that we're getting into impact that? If we're waiting to August for that to happen, then we get these coming through.
The referendum that's on the August election, which is the only one, and the city's indicated to us that they prefer not to use the referendum method, right? And the only reason they're having to do it with this particular one is because it is outside the urban growth boundary. Assuming that the growth plan committee meets before August and brings this particular property inside the growth boundary, there would not be a need to have the referendum in August.
So we're waiting to August on this decision? Decision for referendum?
There is no decision for you all, for the commission, when it comes to a referendum, that's decided by the voters.
I know, but if they continue to do this prior, prior to a task force, if there's a task force together to look at all this, and then we continue to hear, aren't there multiples being done? This is another by referendum, correct?
The one before you on Buchanan Road is not a referendum.
I get that, but the other one is.
Correct.
So we're proving, we're working with that, at the same time we're doing a task force that's looking at the future? Isn't that what this task force is supposed to be doing?
Yes.
And then where, can the city not do multiple referendas until then?
They could, they've indicated they don't prefer that method, but in this case, it's the only method available to them.
How many methods, how many times have they done the referendum?
I think just once, twice, twice on the last one.
So they have three.
So this would be a third.
That's what I'm saying, if we got, if we have a task force, seems like we'd wait on, or the city would wait on the referendum until that task force?
That particular property, I know, because I've asked all these questions myself, the issue is the property owner is on a timeline. The property will become commercial, and they have a business, a private business that is ready to begin development. And so that is, that's, the timing of that is really what's driving them, rather than waiting until that point, if you waited past August, Marlon, what would it be? You're talking over a year before the next scheduled election. November, I'm sorry, yeah, so you'd be waiting till November, but their folks are pushing to have it done sooner. And don't forget to vote in November.
Yes, Commissioner Hughes.
Mr. Chairman, if you need someone to place this on the May twenty-eighth work session, I believe that'll be the second work session, I can do that. Oh, it's already on there, all right.
All right, so let me...
If somebody needs to, then I'll put it, place it on the May twenty-eighth.
Okay, let me make one comment, so we're going to have a truck stop in the county across the street, we're going to have a truck stop motel in the city using the same sewer line. I just find that very interesting, but that's, that's all right, so be it, go ahead, sir.
If there aren't any other questions, that's all I have.
Just one, real quick one, and I guess it's more philosophical. Why do we have not, I remember the mayor and I applaud it, but if the city can annex outside the growth plan, they've done and getting ready to do, then why even mess with it? I mean, they obviously are ignoring it.
They're not ignoring it, it's the only method, let's back up to the beginning, a property owner has requested this, so the only method available to annex that particular property, the way our lines are drawn now, is through the referendum.
But it does, the whole concept, if I remember, of the growth plan is basically head the boundaries and basically says, city of Cleveland, you can go here, no further. Well, we found out they can't go further.
Yeah, that would be a question for your legislature.
It will. Anyone else? There being no one else, we'll go to the reports from committees and our districts. We'll start on our right with Commissioner Beatty.
Everything's doing pretty good right now, but on the places on a resolution, I mean, agenda, the resolutions commit to up to fifteen point one million fund to the construction of a new academy building at Hopewell School, and to expand the cafeteria with funding to commence in the financial year of two thousand twenty-four and twenty-five.
Can you, I missed the first part of it, can you repeat that, please?
On places on this agenda, the resolution to commit up to fifteen point one million to fund the construction of a new academy building at Hopewell School, and to expand the cafeteria with funding to commence in the financial year of two thousand twenty-four and twenty-five.
Let's see, so we already have it on the agenda, but you're not changing anything then, right? Okay. Is that all you have, sir? Commissioner Hughes, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add a resolution authorizing the Bradley County Attorney to prepare and follow any and all necessary legal actions in court of Bradley County to institute injunction, mandamus, abatement, or any other appropriate actions to prevent and join the abate, the continued unlawful use of the property located at four forty Old Powerline Road, northeast Cleveland, Tennessee. If I could place that on the voting agenda for the May twentieth, I believe it is?
That's...
Yes, May twentieth voting session.
That's the property we have discussed numerous times here on the commission.
It's one that has went through zoning, it failed to pass there, it's went through, the commission also failed to pass for, there also for numerous reasons. But it's, they've continued to run a salvage yard or junkyard almost property since.
Thank you. Oh, I also forgot to recognize the Mike Griffin from Chamber of Commerce, thank you for being here, and the Director of Schools, Dr. Cash, and the people that, civilians that we have here, constituents, thank you for coming. The next...
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Can I ask a question on that property, if you don't mind?
Go right ahead, sir.
Is that okay? By doing this, what takes place, I guess, just an injunction?
The county attorney, I asked her to stay here also, but to best my knowledge, it's going to give her the ability to move forward with the court side of it.
Yes, so where are the properties at now? They have been sent a notice of violation and a cease and desist order. They were given a period of time to stop operation inconsistent with the zoning. They have not done that as of this date. So this would be the next step, injunction is the, an injunctive action allows us to take it to court and get a court order forcing them to stop. It really is the, if someone chooses to ignore you, if we don't do this, it's really the only way we can sort of force them, I guess, to stop. So yes, that's what I would be doing with, in conjunction with the planning and engineering office.
Thank you, Ms. Freiberg, I figured since Commissioner Hughes asked you to stay, we'd at least let you speak on it for a minute, so thank you, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, anything else? All right, we will go to Commissioner Oliver, please.
Yes, just a couple of things, Chairman, first of all, Second District's doing well. A couple of questions referencing this resolution. Crystal, is it possible now to, if you go down an item, the last item on the agenda there, it says, agreed to Bradley County with fund one point eight million for Bradley Central High School running track upon final completion of the Hopewell? Is it a possibility I need to make a motion now to drop that off the resolution? Or drop it when we try to vote on it, make a substitute motion?
You can't make a substitute motion in a work session, you would have to wait till the voting session. So if a commissioner, I mean, certainly the commissioner that placed it, which is Commissioner Blake, if he wanted to leave it on the agenda, he could do that, and you could make a substitute motion at the voting session to that effect, but not at the work session.
Okay, because I think it's imperative that we look into that situation long before four years from now. Some of you folks don't know much about track or anything, it's checking on it, you know how long it's been since Bradley High School had a home track made? Eight years. Eight years since they've had a home track made, because the track, it can't be used, basically, for track. So just something to give you something to think about before next week, I think we need to pull that whole thing and look at it strongly from other ways of financing or something, because we cannot wait four more years, and we're buying property all over the county to do things with, and we can't come up with enough money to do a track after, we've talked about it now for three years, I think, if I remember right, at least three years, we've talked about it, but somehow or another it never can get funded. So anyway, I plan on putting a substitute motion to pull that and look at it further study later. That's all I got, Chairman.
Commissioner Blake, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, so I guess we're a tad out of order, because these are community and district reports, and this is on the agenda, but it is what it is. This is the language that came out of finance, and it was also requested by the school system, Dr. Cash and the school system to include that. So I guess my question is, if you want the track to be funded and it's in the resolution, then why would you pull it? But I do get the fact of the timing, and that's, that was what was, quote unquote, agreed upon, is that it would be done either in parallel or at the conclusion, but it is in writing that the track is going to be done. But the other piece of it is, is, and it's actually, Mr. Beatty, he's going to present the resolution next week, it came out of finance and I, you know, out of respect for, it's Hopewell is the project, and it's in the First District for the, that, and he's going to present the project, but that's kind of the thought behind it, and that's why I put it on the work session, so we could have this discussion right now. In the sense that it's going to be funded through capital projects, through our fund one eighty-nine, we're not going to do one fifty-one, which means we would go in debt. You're getting ready to see the mayor's proposal here in a couple of weeks, where we're getting our debt down, which I think is a good thing. And it also, in agreement with the school system, they're going to fund the Science Wing and Waterville, Dr. Cash, and Parkview, apologize, I'm sorry. And they've got a number of other projects going on, I think Coney Middle, Riley High's got some things, so we're going to see a lot of construction in the education world. And our part is, you know, this piece over right here. So I hope that addresses any questions or concerns with respects of what we're trying to accomplish. Other than that, Mr. Chairman, a good thing is, me and the other commissioners had a chance to go to the graduations and see all the young people walk across the stage and throw their hats, or what's it called? Little hat, whatever. Bobcat, yeah. Yeah, so here's the first Monday that they're officially out of high school, so they're hopefully starting the next chapter of their lives. But I appreciate the invitation from the school systems to go to the graduation, it's always a good time. And I think that's about it, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Collins, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just a few things, IT Committee will meet here in the commission room Thursday, May sixteenth, it's going to be at eleven AM. Also, again, to reiterate, Commissioner Blake, congratulations to our high schools, Bradley Walker Valley and Cleveland High School, great graduations all the way around, big weekend for them, and unrelated to that, we have Mr. Pritchard here today. If it's okay, Mr. Pritchard's going to speak to us as a resident of Fourth District. He has a concern regarding private property, I'd like to recognize him if that's okay.
That's very fine, pleasure having you, sir.
Hello, you guys, I am Bob Pritchard, we own a small operation Whisper Springs Farm, actually my wife does, this is Amanda, so thank y'all so much for having us. We've been in a little bit of a battle with a neighbor who has decided to put a mega poultry house, and I've got some pictures.
Thank you, or that's, these packets the same, sir? Okay, so what?
We can get more if y'all need them, but they've decided to put a mega poultry farm about a hundred and twenty feet from our front porch. And so I understand the Right to Farm Act, I understand all of that, but I don't see how it's appropriate for one person to better their property at the detriment of ours. You can see the before and after pictures, our property is an agritourism property close to Apple Valley Orchard, I'm sure y'all are very familiar with that area. Amanda has a flower farm, Whisper Springs Farm, that she does fresh-cut flowers, all organic operation, and this mega poultry farm and corporate company has come in. Every time we try to talk to them, they blow us off, TDEC is involved, we've had EPA involved, we've tried to get some traction, they've been under a violation since December second of last year, but nobody seems to be holding these people accountable, and they just continue working, they continue dumping their stuff into our property, they don't even have chickens yet, so you can imagine the putridness that's going to come from this, blowing into our property and polluting our pond. They also destroyed our spring, which is a spring that not only feeds our lake and another pond, but it also feeds Carson Creek, and so they have destroyed this spring with their heavy machinery, Wright Brothers Construction was involved. They came in, tore all of our trees down, or all their trees down, and this, this initially, when they first started the construction, poured heavy levels of nitrogen from the trees and stuff rotting into our pond, which created blue-green algae in our pond, killed some of our wildlife, killed some of our fish, and it's just, it is just ongoing. Our pond has looked like a mud hole since December second of last year, and we don't know what to do. Like we, it's just like everything's falling on deaf ears, and so I don't know what to do, I don't know if you guys can have some suggestions? I don't see how someone can be in violation with TDEC for this long and still continue construction, still continue their operation, still continue to destroy our property, and nobody seems to be holding them accountable for that. We've got, the guy has a hundred and thirty-three acres, and he decided to put the farm, again, a hundred feet from our house, on the front seventeen acres, and so we're just at a loss. Like, we don't know what to do, this is destroying our property. TDEC originally said that our property was, did not fall in the wetland area. I don't know how that is, because I mean, if you walk down through there, like where they're, where they're using our property as a sediment basin, is like, anywhere you step is a wetland. I mean, I don't know, we have found the endangered species, the crayfish in that area on our property before, and that was falsified on the original documents, said that there were no endangered species, and so these people are just doing whatever they want to do. And corporate America is taking advantage of our way of life, my wife's farm, and we just don't know what to do. We're at a loss.
You do have an existing TDEC violation form in writing, it's, you've got...
Yeah, it's all, we don't have it, did you bring anything with us?
Oh, I mean, I'm not asking for it today, I just want to verify that it's in writing and it's documented.
Many violations, they keep giving violations, and...
To the county attorney, do we have any, any options on notifying the state, or someone at the state that looks over TDEC on this?
Well, I mean, it definitely is in the purview of TDEC, so, I mean, at the risk of telling the state what to do, you certainly could, but we don't have any authority over TDEC.
No, I knew we didn't have any authority, but we have the authority to contact who's over TDEC, I guess is what I'm saying, about their inability to fulfill their job.
Do you know who it is that you've been communicating with at TDEC?
Yes. And she's been very friendly. And continues to write the notice of violation, but to my knowledge, there has been no fines, there's no cease to construction, like they just continue to do, destroy our property.
Probably would need to go above that, that's probably the inspector that was out there, so I don't, Jennifer Ennis was over that portion of TDEC, but I don't know if she still is, so we certainly could figure out who that is.
If we don't have any objection from anyone on the commission here, let's do that and put on the agenda, if we could, I don't know who could sponsor it, a letter or something, resolution to these people to do their job. It's typical government bureaucracy, to be honest, they call it complacency. They've got a job to do, they know what their job is, but they sit back and relax until someone agitates them a little bit. But you've got the documentation on all, the critical thing is, I want to make sure before we move forward that you have in writing that they found them. I think that permit number...
It's in that folder, right?
Did they contact you, that there were no, what do you call them, crayfish or whatever? Prior to issuing the permit? I ask these questions, I used to be an appraiser, so I...
No, in fact, we didn't, we never had a chance to appeal, one, they deviated from their original plan, which did not have their runoff, their stormwater drainage coming into our property. Which did not have their runoff, their stormwater drainage coming into our property. They changed the plan without approval and then like the state didn't make them redo it. They were just like, oh, well, that sometimes happens. We'll just approve it later or whatever. Like it, like there's lots, but we never had a chance to appeal the runoff. We never had a chance to appeal the placement of the chicken houses. Um, and I mean, they're they're right. I mean, you step out our front porch and they're just right there. It is, it is very disturbing how close they are.
But we, I mean, obviously.
And fix what they've messed up, like reestablish our spring or or put a well in there. Cause our pond that was once spring fed and beautiful and families would come out and fish and take pictures and. Ride kayaks or boats out in the water. Now it's just a mud hole. Like there's, I don't even know if there's anything living in it, except for turtles, maybe.
Fisher, winners. Does this owner live there?
No.
So this is just a business for.
Yes, this is a business for him. He bought the property in December, December of twenty-two, right? December, and and the only reason we knew it was a chicken farmer is because he he has other chicken houses. And so he brought all of his chicken carcasses and dumped them on the property. Cause I always leased it to deer hunt on. And so I was like, where is all these chickens coming from? And that's when we found out that the property has sold to a chicken farmer. And he illegally came out there and dumped all these chicken carcasses where the chicken houses are now. So. So there's.
I'm familiar with boiler houses, so I, very familiar as a matter of fact. So he, did I understand you correctly in seeing that he dumped a bunch of carcasses on your property?
Yes, in December twenty-two, and we have pictures of that as well.
In open air, he didn't.
You can imagine the coyotes.
No, 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 coyotes, it's illegal.
You're right.
To my knowledge. Uh. Does anyone on the commission have any other question? What we'll do, sir, we'll have Vice Chairman Winters here. Offered to prepare a letter, work on preparing a letter, we'll get the thing prepared for you. We can't do anything on the zoning, so that's, that's.
Yeah, I understand that.
Okay, but we possibly can entertain some action on the permit.
Yeah.
Okay?
Is there a, no, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, congratulations on your leadership. You're a, you're a great principal.
Thank you so much.
You have a brother that has all kinds of talent at Lake Forest, by the way. I've enjoyed his talent with my family. Uh, I'll be glad to work with this, with the attorney and see what we could do on this. This is, this is uh progress, supposed to be progress of growth and hitting with local individuals like you. They have your fine home and that's, that's your home that you treasure. Uh, let's see if we can get some work on that. But I'll be glad to chat with you and and we'll go from there.
Thank you so much.
And our attorneys.
Okay, thank you.
We can't promise you success, but we can promise you we will try.
Okay.
All right.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
I appreciate it.
Anyone have any comments or questions, gentlemen and wife? Thank you very much for coming and you're welcome to come anytime, sir.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Commissioner Collins, you're still on board, sir.
That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Um, Commissioner Winters, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I've had the opportunity, I think of all of us, had seen grad- graduations this week. Uh, college graduations, high school graduation, musicals, uh, and we're just uh so proud of our school system. Uh, both uh, uh, high schools, middle schools, elementary schools for the way they've closed out. This holiday season finishing up with graduation and uh it's great to be a part of Bradley County. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, that's all.
Thank you. Commissioner Goins, please.
Sixth district, doing well. I don't, nothing to report.
Commissioner Slater, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have nothing to report today.
Commissioner Mason, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, wasn't here last week, but I hope all of our mothers had a good day yesterday out there. Six districts doing well. As promised, I have a April uh monthly report on the TDOT litter grant. Um, county miles, six hundred and sixteen miles, state roads, two oh six, and our city roads was seventy-five miles. Total pounds of litter was twenty-one thousand eight hundred and sixty pounds. We also turned in eight hundred and fifty recycled items, uh cleaned up one dump site. And uh, from the environmental side, uh had the pleasure of uh getting two. Uh, properties demolished in the month of April on Hughes Road and corner of Eureka. Uh, and Moore Road. Th- these are two known uh drug houses that were in our county. Um, a lot of homeless drug use are, I think our uh county patrol officers and number. Of patrolmen out on these sites. Well, if you drive by those sites today, they're they're uh dirt piles, so that's what we like to see. Um, also, I don't know if Alan Mense's, he's here today. I don't know if Alan wants to come up and talk about Saturday's event. On the tire take back. You want to come up?
Please, sir.
Come on up.
Not used to doing this. I'm used to sitting there and covering all you guys and. Trying to think, Bill may be the only one that I've covered before, except for Howard. Can't remember if Louis was on the commission when I covered you guys or not, but. Uh, Saturday, we had tire take back event over at the sheriff's department. And uh, we ended up getting three hundred and ninety-five tires brought over, which was pretty good. Started off a little slow, Tim, but uh, and and it it was gradually a lot of folks and then maybe not that many. And then more and then less. And but we ended up with uh. I don't know if it's a record or not, uh but uh I think it's pretty close to uh to the number that we've uh. We've uh had uh at at these events, so. We uh, as as uh Tim said, what we're doing is keeping them out of our ditches and uh. Out of our our ponds and our lakes and and everything like that, so that's a good thing. The uh, the two roll offs that we got waste connections donated those to us. The tires have been taken down to uh the landfill this morning. And I think they're, they'll end up going, Tim, correct me if I'm wrong, to Knoxville for recycling.
Yes.
Liberty Tire up there. And uh, we are able to to do this uh. At no cost to the the residents because of you guys uh helping us out with with some funding. So we appreciate that. Um, we hope to do it again later in the year. So anybody who may have said, oh, man, I'd missed it. I I did it again. I missed it. I'll have to wait till next year. No, we may do another one in October. So uh, keep that in mind. And if you've got tires that you didn't get rid of, that may be the time to do it. I don't know what else to.
Anyone have any questions?
Say.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we have any idea if any of them were dealers that were tire dealers that were unloading on you?
I didn't know any of them. Uh.
They get a fee for the tires.
I I will say, since it's on the record, uh, for those of you that remember Rick Norton, uh, over at the paper, he showed up with one tire. And I gave him a hard time about that. But uh, and I said, now, where did you find out about it? And he said, I read it in the paper. And I said, you better. But uh.
He knew what to say, didn't he?
And we had one person show up with a tractor tire that we we asked that, uh, not the, not those size tires. But just standard tires. And I I think they uh. They were okay with not, us not taking it. Uh, but uh, otherwise, and uh sheriff's department, wanna wanna give them a. A a a nice uh pat on the back, especially those trustees that come out and help us. Uh, they work hard. They like being outside. There's, there's no doubt about that. But uh, I had a couple of them talk to me and say, thank you guys for doing, doing this. And it's like, no, no, let us thank you for doing this, even though I'm not sure they had an option or not. But uh, it was, it was nice of them to to get involved. Both stormwater divisions, uh, the city and the county were involved. And uh, we uh, it's just another thing that we're trying to do to to help our our community.
Thank you very much.
If I wa- I I would like to say one other thing is um. I've have worked with the uh, the postal service and we had the uh. National Association of Letter Carriers this Saturday. We're picking up food that was left along the mailboxes. And I understand from Daniel Coob, for those of you that know Daniel, he coordinated it, that they raised or they collected. Uh, just over eight thousand pounds of food. That'll be going to several church food banks in town. So uh, thank the community for that, too. Okay?
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Bill Lawrence.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I want to thank Alan Mintz. He's doing a a great job as interim director for KAB. Uh, yes, thanks Chris Broome, the city of Cleveland, and all of his guys that came out from city stormwater. And also from the TDOT litter grant, uh, special thanks to my boss, Captain Gabe Thomas, Camille McGill. And Thomas Bell for always making me look really, really good. Thank you, Chairman. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Lefford, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I'd like to uh recognize Richard Burnett, one of our constituents. Thank you for coming. Uh, secondly, storms last week, um, um, got a call from uh Jeff Stewart from the fire department. I want to thank those guys, the fire department for getting out, checking on our citizens in Bradley County. The road department for clearing all these trees and uh, of course, I've got a tree in my yard. I think Tim sees that as he passes. I think Tim had some trees down also. And the sheriff's department uh for getting out and checking on our citizens to make sure they were safe, uh make sure they were okay. Um, I commend Jeff Stewart for sure, uh, cause he messaged me early. And uh, you know, said they were out and about making sure everybody was safe. And that's my main priority is making sure my citizens, especially my district, are safe. And also on the uh high school graduation, Bradley High School, went to that, uh, seen three hundred and sixty-five students. That's great. I've got a junior uh grandson that's there, that hopefully I'll be able to stand and watch him walk through the line. As I did my three boys walking through the line, uh, when they graduated some years ago. And my next item, EMS, everybody knows that this is um dear to me. Uh, I see those guys every day. I work the ER quite often. Uh, we lost uh. Mike Garen, of course. And then I wanted to comment on Adam Lewis. He took over as interim director and I've talked to several of the uh EMTs, paramedics. And those guys are just ju- just amazed at the the performance that Adam has done for them. Uh, I seen him one day, uh, it was a couple of weeks ago, three weeks ago. He was in full EMT uniform with his little hat on. He got his F endorsement to drive an ambulance. And he was out there with those guys, working the twelve hour shift with those guys, integrating with those. And I just want to commend and thank um, uh, gosh, forgot his name, Adam, for the job he's done. And the morale of our EMTs and paramedics. Everyone that I've talked to, which has been about a dozen of those guys, are just pleased to have. Uh, Adam, working with them. I think he he means well and I I know it's a, it's a big, it's a big machine to run that. To make sure that everything is done appropriately. There's a lot of. Uh, of of things that are unseen that we as, some of you that are not in the medical field, you don't see what I think Adam has now got to see. Some of the uh stuff that, you know, we can complain about things all the time, but until you've been there, until you've been in that ER. Until you've done a STEMI, until you've done a bleed of some sort, you know, I I beg that you be careful. Uh, of of how you treat our medical professionals. And um, one other thing, I had um two young coworkers at the hospital. They were uh nineteen years old, twenty-one years old. Uh, they worked in our housekeeping department. Friday, they were up uh at the Bluffs up in Dayton somewheres or another. And they both, one jumped in the water and the other jumped in to help him and they both drowned. So condolences to that family of those young boys that were like my grandson. And it it hit me in the heart Saturday when I heard it. So uh, other than that, the sixth district is doing well and that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next is Commissioner Rogers and also Commissioner Rogers, if you could give us an update on your daughter, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I too want to say congratulations, like many of you have, to all the graduates. Uh, Bradley Central High School, Walker Valley High School, and also Cleveland High School. As the youngest one here, the most recent high school graduate, not too far off. Uh, I I kind of know, still remember where you are at this time. And just want to encourage you, whether you're going into college or whether you're going to start going into the workforce is. Is just take each day, day by day, and enjoy the journey. And um, it's okay to fail. It's okay to make mistakes. Learn from them, use them, follow your heart, learn from your past and and your present. And hopefully it will prepare you for the the future uh that you all have. Also, Mr. Chairman, this week is National Skilled Nursing Nursing Care Week. Um, and our friends at Bradley Healthcare and Rehab Center are having a special event all week long. They've asked me to invite all the commissioners and also the mayor uh to these events. Each day, they will have a special theme uh for all the staff at uh Bradley Healthcare. Um, they will have uh food trucks, special food trucks and vendors set up to provide treats and encouragement to the entire staff. And they have invited all the commissioners and the mayor out uh there this week. Um, today it starts from one to three with a gelato truck. So if we can hurry and finish this meeting up here in a little bit, run over and get some gelato. And um, I'll send the flyer out to uh Ms. Multry so she can email it out to all you guys. And that way you guys can hopefully attend some days this week as well and support uh that's our staff over there. And uh, our friends at Bradley Healthcare and Rehab Center. And like you asked, Mr. Chairman, a personal privilege note, um. Last Wednesday, uh, was a normal Wednesday for us. Um, many of you know that our two oldest daughters dance down in Chattanooga. And usually are there for six or seven hours a day, Monday through Friday. And then travel all over the country on the weekends doing competitive dance. And um, I have the joy and the privilege to pick them up every single day from dance in Chattanooga and spend that time with them on the ride home. And it was a normal day where we came home and did our normal things and eat dinner and spend time as a family watching the Braves play. And uh, didn't even get to see the end of the game. And uh, at that time, usually my wife will take our youngest daughter, Georgia, who's eighteen months old and. Put her in the bath and get her ready for bed and um. Last week, uh, Georgia fell getting into the bathtub and hit her head. And um, at that point in time, she quit breathing, um. Passed out completely and uh probably one of the scariest moments of my wife's life and my life as well. And having a ten-year-old and an eight-year-old, we've lived through many of those scary moments, but this was probably the scariest. Um, my wife revived her daughter and uh got her back screaming and and breathing. And uh, while I called nine-one-one and as Commissioner Lefford thanked EMS, I I too want to take time and and thank. Um, paramedic Matty, Matty Jones, uh EMT Noah Thornton, Commander Ally Taylor, Amanda Jada Stewart. And Director Adam Lewis uh for their quick response uh to our house the other night. And uh, for them taking care of our little girl and transporting her to TC Thompson in Chattanooga. And for the doctors down there that took care of her. Um, we are blessed and thankful that there are no brain bleeds, that she doesn't have any fractures in her skull. Or in her neck, um, that her heart and her lungs are doing great. Um, but she has a really gnarly concussion and uh, she uh has days that are good, times that are good throughout the day and sometimes that are bad. Um, it's the saddest, but also the cutest little thing when she holds her head and just says, oh, you know, and holds her head and uh. Taken a lot of naps, but she is recovering well, uh, and we pray that her recovery continues. I do want to say thank you to all the commissioners who called, texted and reached out. and prayed for sweet little George throughout this past week and for your continued prayers. Other than that, Mr. Chairman, that is all I have today.
Thank you very much. We'll continue praying for your daughter. We'll now move to the agenda items. Agenda item A, County Schools Budget Hearing. I guess that would be Commissioner Blake.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. According to our budget calendar, we're getting to that part. Today is the day that the county schools come and chat with us about their budget request. We all received the documents, I believe, this past Friday. So if you'll recognize Dr. Cash and/or Ms. Willcutt, I'd appreciate it.
No problem, Dr. Cash. Ms. Willcutt, Susan, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Commission, for allowing me to come today and give you some highlights of what our budget looks like and also field any questions that you may have. Ms. Lori has my PowerPoint ready. Thank you, Ms. Lori, for always working with me and always being so helpful. And we will get started if that's okay with you guys.
Move along.
Well, we made it through the first year of TEESA funding. If you remember this time last year, we were all very nervous about all the promises the state had made to us about our funding. And although it's been challenging to navigate, it's been beneficial in providing additional state funding so far. I showed you this last year, but I've kind of updated it with a few changes just so that you can get a better idea about how this works. So if you look at that pyramid, the very bottom level is now paying $7,075 per student. Doesn't matter what there is about that student that makes them unique. Every student starts out with that much funding. And if you look over on the right-hand side, if you're looking at it on your right, that requires a state and local split, which I know you all are, are very interested in. So if you go to that next level, this is what we, they call the weights. And this provides additional funds for students with unique learning needs or who may need additional supports. Now, the thing on weights is it can be as little as 15% premium on top of that base, or it can go up to 150% depending on what the needs are of that particular student. That's very, very different from the BEP formula we used for 30-some-odd years. It's also a state and local split. But if you go up to the blue section, this is direct funding. A couple of things that would be included in direct funding would be like our CTE students. Like right now, CTE student earns a $5,000 premium on top of everything else. And what's really interesting to you guys, as you will see in a minute, how it affects that local split, is that the, this part is actually 100% state-funded. That's a really good thing. Then when you go up to the very top, those are outcomes funding. And last year, they told us about outcomes funding, but we had no idea what that was going to be based on. Everything was to be determined. So I just wanted to update you on, in the middle of the year, when they started developing what the outcomes funding would provide, that we actually earned almost another million dollars based on outcomes funding. And that, again, is 100% state-funded. So, bottom two, state-local, which is what BEP always was. The top two is 100% state-funded, so the local doesn't have to have any part in those two items, okay? I think that's really important to understand. So let's look at our sources of revenue, because this is, this is kind of eye-opening to me at least. Is our April TEESA estimate is $93,0515. Based on our fiscal capacity, the state's portion of that will be $72,47,907. Now, to put that in perspective, I think this is my ninth budget. And when I did the first budget, our entire budget was about that. It was around $73 million. So that just shows you, this is, this is a huge, huge increase to our funding. And of course, local revenue, you're very interested in. We are projecting that FY '25 property tax will increase by 3% over current year actuals, which our estimate is going to be $12,641,873. We recommend keeping the local option sales tax projection the same in FY '25 as it was in FY '24. We estimate that to be $19,546,772. I want to stop there just a minute, because I believe in all the years I've been doing this, we have always projected a growth in sales tax. And if you remember when COVID hit, we, we were all just kind of reeling, thinking the bottom was going to fall out of sales tax, but it never happened. Well, I won't say the bottom has fallen out of it, but it has plateaued. And so we think that we're going to come close to meeting this year's budget. It may come in a little less. Some of our other revenue is going to come in a little more to even that out. But we do not believe that the budget for next year should be increased over the budget for this year. If you look at actuals, we're actually budgeting about a 3% increase over our, what we think will be our actual. But that is very fluid right now. One month will be down, the next month it will be up. So we're watching that very closely. I want to spend just a minute on our weighted ADA, because that is such a huge component for a county with two school districts. And why is that number so important? Keep in mind, ADA means average daily attendance. But WFTDA means weighted ADA, which is a very different animal. That means that not only is it tracking the kids that are in their seats, basically their attendance, but it is also tracking what else, how they're weighted. For instance, this is an example that I thought when I first started doing this, it was very eye-opening. If you have a child that's like in the ag program, they get weighted at 1.5. So there's all these different things that they weigh our students in. And when we get those weighted numbers, they're always much higher than even our membership numbers, because our kids get weighted at different, at different amounts. Our new weighted ADA numbers are up by about .12%, although it will not significantly change our local revenue. That's always very good news when the split goes up instead of down. It, that's .12%. And when the trustee had to go back and true up all those revenue numbers, it was somewhere between $5,000 and $60,000 that we got in addition. And I know that doesn't sound like a lot, but when we get money like that, I always think about what would that pay for? $50,000 to $60,000 is a teacher. That's a brand-new teacher. So we, I always think of it, in a, in a $106 million budget, I know that doesn't seem like much, but every little bit helps. I've just got a few pie charts that I always like to share, and for some reason, the category names didn't come over when I sent them. So I will, let me flip to mine. And if anybody wants a hard copy of this, I'll be glad to get you one. I apologize for that. Okay, so this is on our total revenue. And if you look at the light gray area, that is what the local revenue puts in. If you look at the big navy blue portion, that is the state portion. It's at 68.3%. So the percentages came over, just not the name. And if you see that itty-bitty sliver up there that says .3%, that is the federal money that goes into our general purpose budget. That is separate from our federal projects, where we have a lot of money coming in for Title I and for SPED. But this is only in the general purpose budget. And that .3% is one thing, and it is our JR OTC program. If we go to the next slide, local revenue is split. Property tax pays about 38% of everything that the local funding body gives us. 59% is made up of sales tax, and 3% is all other revenue that comes through the local funding body. And I always like to show this, and those names didn't come over on that one. But if you look at the huge blue section of that pie, that's salaries and benefits. And I always like to show that, because when we're looking, when we go through the budget process and we're looking at all the needs that we have, if you look at salaries and benefits, which there's very little you can do with that, we, we can't go down in salaries. We can't go down in benefits. The only way that you can really substantially cut that number is to cut positions. And we certainly don't want to do that, especially when we are in a growth cycle. But I think it's important to see that, because even if we took all those other sections, where the dark burgundy is contract services, that would be things like our bus drivers, our cleaning service. That would all fall within that. The one next to that is our supplies and materials. You think about how many supplies and materials that we use in the school system, but that only makes up 3% of our budget. The next one over that medium pink mauvy color is utilities. And you think about what we spend in utilities a year, but it still just makes up 3% of our total budget. The next one is other charges, and then the last one is our capital outlay and equipment. So no matter what we were to cut in those small pieces, or how much we do anything, it's, if you look at when we're spending 80% on salaries and benefits, the rest of that pie is 20% that we can actually adjust very much, if that makes sense. And I always like to point that out, because salaries and benefits, our biggest commodity is our teachers. And we can't run a school system without them, and so that is where we put the bulk of our money. So our budget highlights, we funded step raises, which cost approximately $680,000. We're funding a 2% across-the-board raise for all salaried employees, which costs about $1.4 million. That's okay. The increase in TEESA base funding, when I showed you that on the pyramid a little while ago, last year, or this current year, is 68, 60 per student. It is going to 70, 75 next year to help districts get to that minimum salary of $50,000 by 2027, which is actually mandated by the state. This coming year in FY '25, every state public education school has to go to $44,500. But our board made the decision to meet that criteria this year in FY '24. So as a result, the 2% raise will increase, increase our salary scale on a bachelor's in zero to $51,000, which is $6,500 a year above the state minimum. And I think that Lawrence talking about, because of this commission, because of our board, how hard we fought to get that last year. Other budget highlights are funding $2.5 million for capital outlay, including building improvements for buildings and grounds, general maintenance, our Bank of America energy payment, which most of you are fully aware of, and safety upgrades. And our capital outlay, outlay list was recommended by the committee and approved at our March meeting. Additional funding for land acquisition for future schools of $2.2 million, and our second year of technology refresh of $800,000. And that little schematic at the bottom is purely brought out of our technology director's schedule. He actually has it set up on a rotation of what schools get what, so that when we went to that one-on-one initiative, we won't ever lose that. And so that's what we spend basically a year to keep that technology fresh. The undesignated fund balance is currently around 7.1%. We anticipate, after our year-end roll, to increase that to approximately 11.5%, which equates to $12.2 million. The balanced budget presented today is a result of many entities working together. Thank you to Dr. Cash and the Board of Education for prioritizing the most critical needs in the district. Thank you so much to the County Commission, the Mayor's Office, the Trustees' Office, and Assessor's Office for your support. And last but not least, thank you to my dedicated staff. And that is the highlights of this balanced budget. I have the budget in front of me. If there are any questions, I would be happy to field those questions at this time. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions? Commissioner Redford?
I see, I see in your future, you're looking to pay 2-point-something million dollars for a planned purchase. What are you going to do with the property you own already in Blue Springs? That you haven't got anything built on in 10 years, I guess, so. What are we going to do adding 2-point-million dollars for another piece of property that may be 10 years before you build on it?
Commissioner Redford, that is definitely a question for our board, but the current thoughts are that's not an area of growth. I can't predict what the board will do, but I do know there is discussion about, is that land that needs to be sold? Or is it something that we keep? But again, that would be a, a Board of Education question.
Well, it just looks to me like it'd be common sense if you got a piece of property on Blue Springs that you don't think you're going to build on anytime soon. Why not sell it to buy that other piece of property that you're looking at, you think might need before the Blue Springs property?
Yes, sir. I agree with your analysis, but again, that would have to go back to the Board of Education.
When is that going to be brought back to the board?
They have a work session, I believe, June 2nd, I believe.
So if they did not decide to buy that piece of property, what would be doing, what would you do with that 2.2 million?
Again, those would be discussions with the Board of Education, but they, we are currently looking at property for, and the growth patterns, so that we are prepared for an elementary school and a possibility of a future middle school that would be on the north end. But those are decisions that are made by the Board of Education. But those recommendations would come to them, and then they would have full discussions.
So you just say that work session's when?
June. We can send that out to Ms. Multry.
I would appreciate that. That's all I have right now.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes?
How many acres is that? 19-something? 19.5 acres?
16 or 19. You're talking about the one on?
On Blue Springs, yes.
19.9.
Now, now, we still own, we don't own the property where the old Blue Springs School was located, correct? And we sold the gymnasium to a church, but we still own the ballpark, correct?
But not the school, the county.
But not the, well, where the school was at. I mean, it's nothing now. Okay.
That's a county-owned ballpark.
Yeah, county. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Rogers?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're flipping through those slides real fast. What was the new starting salary again for teachers?
Anything else? Anyone else?
So, Susan, your fund balance projection, and I'm fully aware, I'm 24, 25. I apologize, I left my glasses on. 13.4%, 14 million, thereabouts. So I guess that, that's a very nice fund balance. I think we agree on that. Is that after all of that's, has been appropriated for your capital projects and anything? So if, you know, we know that budgets are a blueprint.
Right.
Things happen throughout the year, stuff like that. But this is after everything that you have budgeted, I mean, as far as capital projects go?
So one thing that, that is in that is our estimated roll, we think is going to be about $4 million. And so when we met with the board, when we went over all these projects, part of, part of the plan, and of course, the board would have to pass that, but they were hoping that we would have enough that we could roll that back into these projects that were beginning. So anything in our fund balance on July 1, that's above a safe amount, will probably be used for capital projects.
Mr. Blake, the, in the work session that we had, that rollover money would be for, as the board would vote, it definitely is up to them, would be for that expansion of that elementary schools.
Okay, so you need, you need this fund balance projection in order to do your capital project? I thought you, you've already got that built into your?
We, we have the OMS, we have the science wing, the, and then we were, would depend on this, this amount of money for the elementary expansions.
So back to your TEESA fund, thank you on the fund balance. So TEESA, my concern is this, when? So TISA, my concern is this, uh, when it first started, and this is more for us here on the commission, and you and I have chatted about it, is that the state's pumping, and I've, they've got tons of money. The other day, we heard that they're flat, and I guess they've got other buckets of money. And we talked to the County Commission Association, and they expressed their concerns, especially for the smaller counties. But, you know, is that they're doing all this insert of funding at this level, which is good because you're transferring that over to salaries and benefits and stuff like that. But the concern is that they keep doing this, and then they've got these requirements for starting salaries, and then they pull back whatever, and then the counties are left with that requirement, and it's gonna require a tax increase in order to meet those funding requirements here in the next three or four years. That's, so I know the position you're in, we chatted about it, is that what are you gonna do? You're not gonna say, you're not gonna accept the money of the states. That's not gonna happen. But we, fourteen of us and the mayor and all that need to be concerned with respects, when we're talking with our legislators, that if they're gonna keep this kind of funding up, be cognizant of the fact that, uh, don't pull the rug from under us and then expect us to be able to fund these increases like that when the funding's not coming from the state. No, a bait and switch is what it really accounts to, so. Um, uh, that's not so much a question for, that's not so much a question you, but it's definitely a concern that County Commission Association members have asked, uh, talked about in some of these meetings and these Zoom calls. And I'm sure that your, your school, your counterparts and also, uh, have talked about it, um, as well.
Um, and, and as we talked last week a little bit about this, um, I do think down the road it's gonna be a challenge. Uh, from the get-go, when this first came out, that was my concern. Um, okay, you're gonna fund it for how long, but eventually it is gonna come up to a local body. But I will say this, and I said this to you last week, is I feel like that Bradley County is in a really good spot, much better spot than most districts, because we, you are already paying more than what they're requiring you to pay, which I feel like is going to give you several years down the road that maybe other districts don't have that are cutting it really close. And also, when you think about the ninety-three million dollars. Because if you refer back to that pyramid where only the bottom two are requiring a local. That is a huge increase, but that is gonna help build your piece based on those bottom two pillars.
It absolutely does, and what concerns me, and again, this is kind of more internal, I mean, your, your budget's good, is that the state sometimes comes out with this, uh, it still baffles me when they say it, Bradley County has the ability to pay kind of thing. It's kind of like we found this with the, the SROs in a way. We already had them implemented and funded, and then the state comes and says, well, you guys are already good to go. It's the other counties that we need to send money to. It's kind of like a punishment, if you really want, that we were doing the right thing from the beginning. So yeah, our, our maintenance of effort is healthy. Uh, I just don't want us to be punished for it, and then the state say, oh, Bradley County school systems, you can, you know, in order to help other counties who are hurting, we're gonna take some away from you. Again, this is more of an internal thing that we need to work with our legislators on, but, um, that's, that's kind of my concern as well.
If, if you look at, um, and, and I'll be glad to share any of this with you guys, but the, um, April estimate that we got, so it shows our maintenance of effort at thirty-three million five hundred, and it shows the local split at twenty million eight hundred. So you can see how we really are ahead of the curve.
Yeah.
You know what? I mean, you should be proud of that, because you really, I do feel like, whereas when this first began, I'm like, oh, my gosh, what's going on four, five years from now? Now, I'm thinking eight, ten years. So not saying you're not, I'm just hoping that the fact that the state, on what they're already saying, is gonna prolong the pain of trying to figure it all out. By then, someone will come to the state, and they will, they will ease that.
I just, we, we say the same story. I mean, we would talk to, you know, our legislators who are over this. We just need to be consistent with our message on them. Last question, Dr. Cash. I always like to ask you this because I think it's imperative to what we're trying to, the, uh, the, what we've been trying to do together, the County Commission and the school board, and that is recruiting and retention of your teachers and all your, all your employees. Um, these, these increases, I think the minimum's what, forty-one, you're, you've exceeded that. So at a high level, how are we doing with respect to recruiting and retention of good teachers in Bradley County?
Um, I think we're doing exceptionally well, especially compared, uh, to some of the other areas around us, um, outside of Cleveland, Bradley County. Um, I think there's always room for improvement. We are having teachers stay longer, but we're also starting to see teach, uh, a larger number of teachers retire, um, which opens up more positions. But we, right now, uh, are not seeing any shortages, um, and are pleased with where we are. We do think we've got to be aggressive in keeping up, um, uh, and making sure that we don't, that our salaries don't slip to a point where we can't recover from surrounding places. Right now, we are, uh, ahead of all of the surrounding, uh, districts. I believe Cleveland just did a five percent increase, which is a little bit more than what our two percent, and at some point, we will have to, have to make that one up.
Um, okay. Yeah, I guess that is a question is, is your school, this is, I guess, your school board question, but couldn't you do more? I mean, it's not for the County Commission, it's a school board session.
One of, one of the things that we, that, that surprised us last year is the, the amount of money that came in from the state that we weren't aware of. So hopefully that, uh, happens again because we continue to grow, and at that point, they could, the board itself could relook and, and make a, make a, a, a decision. But that again would be a Board of Education, and we make the recommendations. And, um, we are con, very conservative this year because of what we believe, uh, will come in, and, uh, hopefully more comes in than we're predicting, um, and at that point, we'll look at it again.
Thank you very much. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anyone else have any question? Yes, Commissioner Winters.
Uh, Dr. Cash, could you share with us your vision of, of these constructions that we're dealing with? Uh, my early years, we did, uh, ponds, uh, pods in all the sub, all the elementary schools, and we did them in a sequence, and I know you're looking at sequence, and we're, I'm gonna be looking to, the commission and the next meeting to look at the resolution that's just been, been brought forward of fifteen million one hundred thousand. And break us from that to these other, the elementaries that we've got in place. What, what is your vision in this, like this construction at one school with close to fifteen million?
Absolutely. Well, I, I want to start with, um, I, I present the vision, but the Board of Education makes those final decisions. So I always want to start with that. So we know that, um, in that Waterville area, uh, lack of a better word, uh, we, we are truly, um, growing faster. So we're, we're looking at possibility of rezoning, and in rezoning some of that, we would make some shifts with where kids were going. That would, uh, help me if and when the board decides to expand Part View. Part View was made for expansion, so I can add there and rezone, uh, which will bring them up, and then take care of growth that's happening in that area as well. On the north end, we would do the same. We would, uh, that's where we're looking at an elementary school, um, on that north end. That, that pulls from all those new subdivisions that are coming in and will also allow me to relieve Michigan Avenue, which is, uh, at capacity. Um, those are our, my, the two that we're looking at. And then as we, uh, look at the expansion for Waterville, that would simply be to take care of the population that they have now. We're not wanting to grow Waterville. We're wanting to build so that we can take care of what we have now, especially with some of the special services and things that are at that building. And in the far future, looking at, uh, a, a middle school, because my high schools are, uh, you know, as my elementary schools grow, my middle schools will grow, and it continues. So I've got, uh, a middle school here, uh, in the center. I've got one on the south side. And, uh, in the future, would look for that on the north end.
This, this is about a five-year, seven-year plan?
Five to ten. I think, I think you're five to ten. Now, your, your elementary school expansions will be, you know, that, that three to four, because it takes that long just to get fire marshal, all, all the things that go into those plans. So you're looking at three to four for those expansions, hopefully in the two-year range for expansions. OMS, of course, is an immediate project that we're hoping starts this August, um, and that would take care of the students that are simply currently there.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Anyone else?
Yes, I have one other question. Uh, make me understand on this, uh, four million and the three million y'all gonna donate or do to the elementary schools. Does that come now this year's fund balance or last year's fund balance?
Um, you want to take that one, Susan? Now, the, 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 the expansion that will happen, not, uh, not with the, the science wing and, uh, the, uh, OMS, our current, current budget, those are funds that came in from TISA that we were not aware that was coming. So that's where that money came from.
But that's this year's money?
That's this year's money.
Okay.
The expansion for the elementary school, whether the board chooses, whichever way they go, would be from this, as we roll money after twenty-four, this would be the twenty-four, twenty-five fund balance.
So at the end of the twenty-four year, this, this year?
Twenty-three, twenty-four.
What's your fund balance right now?
Susan? We actually moved two million out of our fund balance to go over to, um, Fund One Seventy-Seven, which is where we're gonna do all the, the capital projects for them. Now, again, we're getting ready to have another work session because this money could be, could go to a different building project. We've got like five that need to be done. But at the beginning, that was supposed to be two million dollars to pay for part of our, uh, the local match for the science. And then after we rolled that four million in July one, we were gonna, if the board, um, still felt the same way, we were gonna move the balance of one point one million over there to finish our part of the science. Okay, that was gonna be moved in One Seventy-Seven. Um, and then the Hopewell project, of course, we asked here, and then the Part View, um, Part View or Waterville, we've got about four million. We think we can come up with another four million to go toward either one of those projects.
So your projection at the end of this coming year in your fund balance, after you've done these projects, going to be where you think you might project?
I'm sorry? Well, we don't like to go below seven percent.
I know where you, I know you know where you're at.
But I mean, that's what, in back of my mind, I'm thinking that we're gonna try to stay somewhere around there. We can, you know, it's, it's a board decision, but that's what, that's what we feel comfortable doing.
Looks to me like the board's got a lot of work to do.
That, I agree, Owen. I think we all do. I think we all have a lot of work. There's a lot of, lot of.
My, I guess the last question I've got is, we've got your budget here.
Yes.
Finally. That's the first time I've seen it. Actually, Mr. Laurie might have mailed it out to us, and I just didn't study it very closely. Is there a real reason that we're going your budget now to go vote on approve it next week, are we?
I don't think you'll approve it until you approve the whole county budget.
Yeah, but you're presenting it now. We haven't really had time to talk about it a whole lot.
Correct. Yes, that, that is correct. But keep in mind, it was just approved, and then we had a couple of days to get it to the mayor. I think Dr. Cash sent it even early this year, be, um, so.
I guess the point I'm trying to make, we're, we're going through a work session now, but we hadn't even discussed this, your budget, per se. You know, we haven't had time to ask you a lot of questions about it.
I, I do want to remind the whole commission that we're bringing you a balanced budget and that our budget, you can't line item, pick it, pick it apart. It's either approved or it goes back to the board. So, um, just remember that when you're looking at it. That's, that's, we are content on bringing you a balanced budget so that we are being fair players in this. But this commission can either accept or reject. You can't pick it apart.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Commissioner Hughes?
Dr. Cash, uh, and the school board, in fact, I want to commend you guys for looking at Hopewell. It's been in dire need and needed some add-ons for years now. Uh, thank you for your forward thinking, because that area is growing, and I can only see in the next few years it, it probably doubling in size in that area. So thank you for doing that.
And again, uh, one of the thought processes of looking at the schools that we are looking to expand, uh, not Hopewell. Hopewell's a different piece, but Waterville and Part View, um, are, uh, are more capable of, of handling expansion for less amount of money than any of the other schools. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to Agenda Item B, Commissioner Malin Blake.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We kind of, uh, chatted a little bit about this, uh, in the committee and district reports, but this is the resolution that, uh, is going to, uh, fund the expansion of Hopewell. Um, and it's not just quote-unquote an expansion, it's also, uh, an overhaul. We, uh, most of us, I think, were able to go out to the, the school and tour and walk around. They were very nice hosts. Um, but it's the board's recommendation Dr. Cash is bringing to us that they feel like they need to overhaul it. Um, I don't want to speak for you, but I think it's six classrooms, um, and then the cafeteria and some other things are gonna be redone. They, uh, I did for the first time, and it's, I'm kind of embarrassed to say it, had a chance to go out there on that day, and I saw the, uh, quote-unquote Hopewell Highway, which took about five years?
Oh, yeah, five years.
More than that to get that done, so, um, if you're gonna be on this commissioner, gonna be on the school board, patience is a virtue, because some of these projects take quite a bit. But this is going to commit, as I said a few moments ago, uh, fifteen point one million, uh, over the next couple of years. The mayor has got a timeline and a payment schedule, working with Susan on paying the bills and stuff like that. Um, and it's, again, it's coming out of capital, uh, out of the capital fund, Fund One Eighty-Nine. So you'll see that when the, uh, budget proposal comes in there and you look at One Eighty-Nine, you're gonna see kind of a different, uh, number system there with respect to One Eighty-Nine. I will add, uh, and I, I said this in the, uh, Education Committee and the Finance as well. Uh, we still have others. Is, education is our top priority, uh, but not our only priority. We are gonna set aside a certain amount, a hundred and fifty thousand, and Fund One Eighty-Nine for non-education kind of expenditures. You know, Sheriff Lawson is gonna need a vehicle here and there, um, uh, Superintendent Collins, what have you. Just, you guys can't spend every single penny for the next three years out of capital project. We still have other things. So I think that's been, uh, good stewards of the, of our funding and making sure we don't put ourselves in a corner. But, uh, this resolution, um, is basically ready to go.
Thank you. Open for discussion on any men, anybody have a question, comments? Commissioner Rogers?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I wasn't able to attend the finance meeting, so I do have a couple of questions. On page one, the last, be it further resolved, says Bradley County will fund one point eight million dollars for the Bradley Central High School running track upon the final completion of the Hopewell project. So is that us funding an additional one point eight million to this fifteen point one million? Or is that one point eight included in this fifteen point one?
It is additional, so you'll do fifteen point one plus one point eight.
And when will that, so that would be in a, one point eight million will be in four years, five years?
At the completion of Hopewell, since, I guess they have it in different phases, um, and if they go fast and things go well, so, but it was, it was, I was asked to put it in here, uh, towards the end of the Hopewell project. They gotta get, they gotta get a certain amount of Hopewell done before anything else gets done, is the general idea. But it is, to answer your question, Rogers, in addition, it's not part of the one fifteen point one, so.
I, I haven't heard about the Hopewell project until recently, just, but I've heard about the Bradley track getting repaired for the past ten years. So is there a reason why we're doing Hopewell fir, I, I'm just trying to understand the reasoning why their board chose to do that first instead of the track first?
I don't want to speak for you, but I think that's the priority that the school board sent over to us. So we're going, we're getting some direction, I guess, from the, uh, school system.
Is that what, what the priority is, Dr. Cash? I know that's the board's priority and?
So yes, uh, fo- focusing on those classroom spaces and the education side of being sure that we are, um, handling the capacity issues that we have is a, is a priority for the board.
Is there a way to do this project simultaneously, or to do the track first and then, and?
That would be a discussion for your. That would be a discussion for your commission.
Perfect. Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Waters?
Uh, I spoke with one of the builders that had helped us tennis court. I was told that the excavation work would need to be done there. Uh, just fixing the, the actual track as we look at it, have to be probably approximately three point one million dollars. You go look at there, I've been a little time watching tennis over there, standing looking at the track. Track is at this level, road is at this level, has to be. It has to be brought down to a level and then to do all the extra things to the track. It was not, and I'm, I'm thinking as we've all thought, here's one point eight million. But when you just get at the excavation point that has begun to begin with and move from excavation, moving from that, and then do the amenities that have to be with the track, it's a three million dollar plus, plus project. That was from a builder that had been knowledgeable in part of the, the ball fields that have been done, like the football fields and all the other, that was pretty, pretty knowledgeable about what had to be done. So I think we're looking at quite a lot of money in, uh, that area and that's probably been the reason it hasn't been moved on earlier. Uh, as you know, the tennis center was done earlier because it was a much smaller project, but this continues as everything is now inflated anyway, uh, to be more and more money. I don't speak for anybody but me in this one because I, that's an individual I talked with that is pretty knowledgeable of the building process of that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anything else, Commissioner Rogers?
No, I, I just, um, wasn't a part of the finance meeting that day, so I was curious to, the wording of this of, this was kind of included on the backend of, we're funding this and then now, you know, four years later, which there might be a new commission at that time, people might be here, people might not be, already agreed to one point eight million dollars down the road for this, for this funding, whether we have one.
Hopefully we can start on it sooner than, than later, but, uh, we have to remember we have a space problem.
Absolutely, and I, and I totally agree with that. We have a space issue and we need to update schools. I totally agree with that as well. I just am curious about the wording in this resolution.
Like, hopefully that your, during the questions have been answered?
Some, yes.
Well, this is the work session.
Well, I just, I, you know, I, I, the board, the Bradley County Board of Education has made their stance that they're, you know, want to do Hopewell before they do the track and.
Commissioner Rogers, maybe it helped you, uh, to walk through the process. I mean, you know, um, the first draft of this came and we looked it over for certain pieces of it. Mayor looked at it for timing pieces of it. We sent it over to, uh, school boards. Dr. Cash had made some changes, so we're kind of sent back. Uh, we went through that, I mean, it went through about five or six drafts or whatever to get to this. Um, so we give and take, if you will, of negotiations. Um, the, the numbers were kind of what we were told to a certain degree and the timing as well, what the mayor was very concerned about. So that was the process on how we got to this resolution.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Commissioner Oliver?
I have to excuse my memory because I don't remember one point eight coming up in too many discussions. I've heard a lot of assortments of different figures, but where, where, when did we settle on one point eight? Anybody can tell me what we're getting for one point eight?
That was the number I was given with respects to, uh, the track. Um, if it's wrong, then we can amend this resolution.
Where did the number come from? I guess, Mr. Blake, is what I'm asking.
I believe it came from the school board, um, is what I was told, one point eight. And again, the, the resolution was sent over to them. If the numbers are incorrect, this is the time to change it. But that's, to answer your question, that was what I was given. I put it in there and they didn't change it. So I'm, I'm assuming I got it right.
Mr. Chairman?
Please.
So we are more than welcome, um, to have, uh, Corbett Drew, uh, talk to anyone on the commission about where the numbers came from. That is not including the whole project. That is simply a portion of the project because the total project that was scoped was somewhere in the neighborhood of eight million dollars. So I think this was, is just a start. I can have him reach out to the chairman and to Lori to set anything up that y'all would like to talk to, uh, Corbett about. He worked with the engineering, the planning and the architects. It is broken down into sections, kind of like Hopewell, that, you know, you need to start with the most feasible thing that you can do, uh, which I believe in this in was simply the track and, and nothing else, the excavation things that were with the track. Um, a- as always, it may go over because of all the, the conditions that you run into, but the numbers came from, uh, the vetting of the engineer and the architect. And we'll be glad to have that sent to, uh, Ms. Muldery so that anyone who would like to talk to them has freedom to do that.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Rogers?
Is, I just, clarification, right? So four years, four to five years timeframe for this one point eight million dollars. Now, we were at one point eight million, three million, now eight million. So if we.
Again, I would recommend that you talk to the, the, the engineers.
Well, I just would like to know, like, if, if we agree to this resolution of how it is, at one point eight million that this funding body is going to be giving to the schools, the schools, I mean, you guys are going to be funding the rest of that, correct?
I honestly, I can't answer that. That's a school board decision. But what I would tell you is that the, um, that there are multiple layers to the complex, not necessarily the track, but the complex. And I do want to say, um, that the, uh, not too long ago, I don't remember when, I believe Bradley used the Lee track, which is open to all Bradley County, uh, events, uh, when, when we're, when, when it's available, had a huge track meet there that was very, very successful. So we do have options, um, for them to use other, um, opportunities at Lee. When it is open, we work directly with Lee and with Oakaway Middle School. Um, but we can get that scope and you can, um, more than welcome to talk. We can, I'll give that number to Lori and she can send it out.
So, Commissioner Rogers, your point, I think, is that we're, we're setting a number and if it's twenty twenty-seven, we're sitting, here in twenty twenty-seven, that's what we're on the hook for.
Yes.
Buying the inflation. If it turns out to be eight million or eight hundred and fifty million, then the school system is going to have to figure out what they're going to do there with their fund balances and their capital projects with their growth plans. But what we're committing to is one point eight million dollars out of our capital projects. Um, perhaps we could go a bit more, I don't know. I mean, chat, mayor's not here, but we get about, um, two million in the Fund One Eighty-Nine, give or take, because some landfill money comes in there, we don't know that, but we budget that. Um, so if you take what we have in there, well, we're getting ready to, this budget coming up to twenty-four, twenty-five and then ongoing with the value of the penny and I think it's about three pennies, I don't remember. Uh, that adds up to about three years' worth of funding, uh, a little bit over. But you also want to have some growth of the penny that goes in there as well. So that's kind of what we committed to is the one point eight. It probably will go more, but the, well, this commission and that, and the school board's going to have to talk about that, but this is what we're committed to in this resolution. And I felt like, you know, as you're said a few minutes ago, it has been talked about for at least three or four years. I know after COVID, it came up, it's probably the first time I heard about it. But this is the first time that I remember, Dr. Cash, correct me if I'm wrong, that the track is actually in writing, that there's a resolution that has spells out that it's going to be done. I understand that some would like to do it tomorrow, but when you don't have, you know, a printing press in the basement, I'm being somewhat facetious, but we, we only have so many dollars. We got our, set our priorities, working with them, this is what we came up with. But it is, it is a draft, so to speak, right now, and it's kind of what we got to, to present to the commission, uh, to get it ready for the final budget.
Absolutely, and I, listen, I'm all for helping fund capital projects for the schools, for our kids, especially in something like this and Hopewell and everywhere else. I also just know that we have a lot of other capital projects that are on the horizon for other entities within Bradley County government, such as the juvenile center, which is the jail, such as other things. If we're on the hook for one point eight, great, we know what our number is. But is that number going to go more? Is it going to go let, whatever it is? Obviously, it won't go less, but will that number go more in four years when we have other projects going, you know, from the county's funding?
Right, and I'll tell you, this is the best educated guess. And then as Susan Volco would tell you with budgets, that's pretty much what you go with. It is your best educated with your, your projections and the fund balances on that kind of stuff. Um, I mean, if this commission or the next commission or the next commission, um, and the school board, uh, asks for a new school, I, I, Lake Forest wasn't so much a new school, it was kind of a construction of an existing school. Parkview, I think, is the last one, whatever, but, um, that's going to require a whole different funding package altogether. I mean, there's no way you can do capital projects with a new school. We'll have to borrow and bond on that. And that brings in a whole different element with sharing and all that kind of, uh, stuff. But, uh, not to be repetitive, but this is our best guess based on what was communicated to us and what we have available right now.
Anyone else? Yes?
One point, excuse me, one point eight, four years from now, will probably get you a piece of grass and fill. So you've got to look at it as now, excuse me, uh, one point eight. That's why I asked to move that off the, uh, off the resolution for this coming voting session because I think that, that one point eight and that whole last sentence needs to be brought before a whole work committee as a separate thing. I don't have a problem with the fifteen million, but I do have a problem with setting a figure at one point eight right now and waiting four years to figure it out when I, you know, we hadn't looked at other sources of money yet, you know? And not saying against the school, but they're sitting there looking to buy two point two million for a piece of property that may be ten years down the road before they ever use it. So I think there's other ways of financing this thing. I just think we need to take a hard look at maybe looking at this situation because like, uh, like you said, Mr. Rogers, it's been discussed three or four, three years at least by now, probably. And, uh, you're sitting there with a track team that can't practice because they don't have a facility to some degree. And Mr. Cash said something about a giant, they had one meet at, at, uh, Lee College, but that's the only one they have because of scheduling. You look at all Lee College sports and all Oakaway Middle sports, you can't schedule a practice. You can't even schedule a meet because it's time, it's all full up. So there is a problem there, you know, that you have. So I just think that's why I want to try to pull that out of the agenda for next week. And we need to look a lot deeper into this situation and see what we can come up with. I think there's more ways that we could possibly fund something within a year. I'm not saying, I said let's discuss it. I didn't say how, Mr. Blake. We don't, we do a lot of things. We don't know how we're going to do it, but we look at it and do it. But when we commit one point eight for four years down the road, I think we're just, I don't want to say what I really think about it, but I think we're wasting our time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just one last, uh, what I, what I believe in, and I, I, I do believe this. I think for the first time, I think your finance committee was trying to get something solid in there that says we are looking at the track and would try to do something about the track. I don't think it was any, uh, slight or anything. I was just, at least we have it in writing. I was not there, but I believe that was the message that I was hearing. At least it's in writing to be looked at. And, uh, so I don't think there was any, um, ill will anywhere in anything except let's at least get this on paper.
I think you're correct, and I think also that we can, we have budget years between now and the four years we can add to that figure and, um, potentially add to it. Commissioner Waters?
Dr. Cash, you've said many times that, uh, this, you have a vision and the school board makes the decision.
Yes, sir.
Uh, what's been presented, what has been presented today is the school board's position of the priorities that they have. It's been submitted to our meeting next week to, uh, assess whether we're going to pay for that or not.
Yes.
That's our role. It's deja vu for me. A number of years ago, I was on this school board for Bradley County for twelve years. And many times we came in here saying what we wanted and the commission would continue to say what they wanted. Uh, this commission has understood that the school board makes the call for the public education program. We make the call on the financing part for what we think, as you presented to us. You've said that several times, but the vision's out there. Your school board's done this. Now, you've heard this discussion. You go back to the school board, they kick around what, what they think here. But the micromanaging on our part, we shouldn't be getting into that, that action. We should be basically looking at what you present. If we're not going to accept that part, then we don't accept the package and send it back to you. And then you bring it back however your board would like to do that. But I do think we should honor what the school board is putting together, and you have very much so, has been deferring back to the people that elected from all of our districts to look at the school system and to bring to us this. So I think we got to keep that priority in mind and not pick our own particular projects that we want to have in place and make that priority for the whole fif- fif- five, fifteen plus million dollars to get moving forward. So maybe we should keep that in mind and I appreciate what you presented. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, one of the pleasures that I've had over the year, last nine years is having a, uh, county commission and a board of education, uh, working together for projects. And I'm actually very proud of the fact that our, uh, board, um, put money forward to take care of, of smaller projects so that you could look at the bigger projects that, that we obviously, uh, would struggle with. So I think it's a collaboration. I don't think it is, uh, one or the other. I, I think that collaboration has worked well and I look forward to the collaborations in the future. Thank you.
So do we. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. And let me clarify, please, if you don't mind. This fifteen million that we're voting on is our funding. It's Bradley County funding, not school funding. So we do have to work with, we do have to manage our funds, manage the dollars. I'm not against one point eight million. I'd like to see it be eight point eight. I mean, if it's going to take eight million to, if it's going to be eight million, then I would like to see us fund this. I, I think this is a project that needs to be funded. I think the funding, we need to figure out where this funding comes from. We need to, we need to discuss all these things, but to throw one point eight million at the bottom of this resolution, it doesn't even touch the surface of it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, it wasn't thrown on there.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, go ahead.
I am honestly just ecstatic because I agree. I've heard about the track for several years, but I'm ecstatic just to see it on a resolution to be voted in. As it was spoke about a while ago, the, the road around Hopewell was something that was battled for a number of years, but it took time to get it in place because it took funding. So we're in the same, the same position that we were with it. Again, I'm ecstatic to see it in a resolution that we get to vote on to approve it.
I mean, the school system can start earlier if they would like. We're committed to one point eight million at the minimum in four years. And, uh, hopefully there'll be more money coming in. We get this thing going. But we've got to take care of the capacity of these schools. I mean, that's paramount. Uh, if we had not even mentioned one point eight, we wouldn't be here thirty minutes now discussing the thing. If we'd have just left it off. So we should be proud that, that we're at least putting it in writing, committing ourselves, and then we can move forward and get this thing done because it's going to be about a six, eight million dollar project, but it's in layers and, uh, the track would be probably first where they can practice and then it's, there's other elements to it. But, uh, we're moving forward on this thing. Uh, is there any?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just, I mean, I appreciate that conversation. I really do. I, I, I want to say that. If you, uh, I think about how we started off with the Pi Center, um, and we had to purchase the American Uniform Building. Then we had, uh, uh, fund it COVID came in and stuff like that. The main thing I think that's important is you get inertia. You get something going. And you, there's going to be changes, there's going to be additions and stuff like that. Um, I would, I apologize if I, if I've come across as coarse. The one point eight million, if it was, if we just put it in there, we will fund the track to its, you know, completion, whatever. We, we would probably have to bond this money out, which changes the dynamics completely. Uh, I think this is a safe number and it. Uh, I think this is a safe number, and if, Mr. Rogers, I'm not to point you out, but if we did put eight in there, that would put us into like twenty-eight, twenty-nine budget of commitment and stuff like that. So, uh, the way I see it is we've committed one point eight, we're good for it without having to bond for it. And the school board wants to spend eight million on it, like you just said, then they're one forty-one and, and their funds, they've got to think about it, or come back to us and say, we need more and we'll have to work with them. But again, I was looking at it kind of like how we did with the Pi Center, is it, it's inertia, it's, it's getting something. We've, it's enough talk and it's kind of put it in writing.
And let me, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, let me do say, I do apologize for saying just thrown in there at the bottom. I, that wasn't the right terminology I should have used. I, I understand that it's been worked diligently and it's been looked at, but.
Believe it or not, your apology. But, uh, if you have the time available and you aren't on the finance committee, it's only five people. Try to be in attendance if you can. You'll get an education how this stuff works. It's different.
And speaking of that, um, you know, this, today is, we're adhering to the budget calendar. Um, I always look to Lori to help me. The next item on the budget calendar is the mayor's proposal, um, which will be the first Monday, whatever that is. That's it. And then finance will take his proposal on that Thursday and make whatever tweaks or whatever we need right there. And everyone is, is, you know, I chair that and I'm honored to do so. Everyone is welcome to come. And I try my darndest to make sure if, you know, visiting commissioner, so to speak, gets recognized because eventually it comes to the full commission anyway, right? So, um, I encourage all commissioners, and some have taken that opportunity, you know, some have lives and stuff and businesses to deal with. But, uh, you know, we basically are coming at the end. The mayor's proposal is on its way. Finance committee will make its final tweaks. Um, I know some of the things that were, that were coming up as well, just to get, you know, be very, is, uh, the opioid money. We got some money coming in there that we have to fund out. Um, uh, debt services, we're going to, uh, aggressively go after eliminating our debt. Um, and a number of other things in the, in the, in the, uh, just the bank meeting, that Thursday meeting, when we put the final pieces together for the resolution, which we'll be voting on at the end of June this year for the first time. So I invite all commissioners to come to all the finance meetings, Chairman.
Anyone else? Anyone else? All right, we'll now move on.
I'm sorry, one thing, if we're past this, uh, this right here, Adam, if you don't mind me asking, uh, I had right here. Is there any update on the emergency shelter? We asked a couple of days, a couple of meetings ago and we hadn't heard. And not to be Lori warts, but we asked the city to, as you well know, we asked the city to, uh, see if they wanted to do the same amount as we committed to. And here we are kind of mid-May, so to speak, and we haven't heard anything unless somebody else has heard anything. I was just, and if we haven't, if we, if we can get something, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. Adam, you got anything to say to that?
Uh, my understanding is they're value engineering some of the costs down from what the number came back as. So, um, I believe that the city is agreeable to, uh, splitting the difference with us, but they're working with, uh, the development district and the architect to try to get a better number so we know what we're agreeing on.
So the city has agreed to.
I don't think they've discussed it in a meeting. It's not something they can vote on yet, but the indications we've gotten is that they are open to it, but they want a better number before we discuss who's splitting what and how much it'll be.
Right, and we purposely set up to one fifty.
Correct. Yeah, it won't be more, it will not be more than that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move along to communication from the audience. I'll recognize and allow five minutes to anyone wishing to speak. Is there anyone that would like to speak? All right, we'll move along next to the next meeting is the voting session, Monday, May the twentieth at twelve. Here at the courthouse, Bradley County Schools Road Show, May the sixteenth at nine AM, Michigan Avenue School. IT Committee, May the eighteenth at eleven AM at the courthouse.
Before you dismiss, I had one more question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Adam, I had asked last week on that, uh, of BMX pavilion, did you get any information on that?
I know the mayor was. I don't have that with me today.
Andy's back there. Did your BMX, big fancy pavilion over the tra- uh, BMX starting gates? The, the petition over it, not the gates?
The roof.
The roof. I was asking about it. Who paid for it and where it came from and all that good stuff? Out of your budget, that's what I needed to know. Thank you.
Anything else? We adjourn.